Good evening. I'm George Spaltoff and I'm the president of the Ford County Homeowners Association. It's my pleasure to welcome you this evening to our webinar featuring the two supervisors who represent the Ford County community for James City County. I'm going to give a brief introduction of each, then we'll turn it over to them for their comments and after that we'll have a Q and A session. Michael Hippel is currently the chairman of the James City County Board of Supervisors. He was elected to the supervisors in November of 2013. Mr. Hippel has lived in James City County since he was 13 years old. He has volunteered with the James City Bruzen Volunteer Fire Department for 30 years. He is a member of the Williamsburg and Toono Quanis, the Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance, and the New Kent Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Hippel is president of Michael J. Hippel Builders Incorporated, a general contractor business specializing in renovation, remodeling, and building individual custom homes in James City County and the surrounding area for the last 28 years. He and his wife Kristen have seven children, all of whom live in the county. Jim Eisenhauer is a member of the Board of Supervisors and he represents the Jamestown District. Jim is a retired Air Force officer and a retired Delta Airlines captain. He graduated from the U.S. Air Force Academy in 1967 and earned his MBA from the University of Utah in 1976. During his career as a fighter pilot, he flew 195 combat missions in the Vietnam War and twice won the Distinguished Flying Cross. In 1987, he began a second career as an airline pilot flying for both Pan Am and Delta, and he served as an elected officer of the Airline Pilots Association from 1993 through 2005. Jim served on the James City County Board of Supervisors from 2006 through 2013, and he was elected to serve once again as a Jamestown District Supervisor for the 2018 to 2021 term. And he currently serves as chairman of the Virginia Board of Veteran Services. He and his wife Linda live in Ford County. Their older daughter Cheryl is a retired Air Force officer who lives in Alexandria, Virginia and works for the State Department. Their younger daughter Cynthia lives in Williamsburg and is a teacher in the Williamsburg-James City County school system. Very distinguished, Jim, I gotta say. With that, I will turn it over to, would you be, would like to go first to make a few remarks? Okay, Jim?
Michael is going to start. I think his video is frozen right now, so it's paused. Are you up, Michael?
It's paused, what we're seeing.
Yeah. Okay. Well, until Michael gets back up online, I'll go ahead and start if you'd like.
Please.
Okay. Let me start with a little bit, oh, Michael, are you back yet? Not quite. I'll just start with a little bit of information for the benefit of those who were at the last year's meeting. We had a PowerPoint presentation and we've also given it to some of the newcomers clubs meetings. And rather than using the PowerPoint, I just wanted to make a few points that were from that briefing. Basically, for folks who are either new to Virginia or new to our area, things are considerably different about local government in Virginia than maybe other places that you may or may not have been involved in local government. Here, we operate under the Dillon Rule, and basically what that means is that the local government has only those powers that are specifically given to us by the state. As opposed to most of the states are home rule states where they can do whatever they want unless the government, state government prohibits it. So I refer to this as the Mother May I Rule. If we have something that we want to do in James City County and it's not specifically spelled out, we can't do it or we have to ask permission to do it. The other thing about Virginia is that cities are separate entities, political entities, completely separate from counties. We have 95 counties and 38 cities, so there are no cities within counties. Those of you who live here know that Williamsburg is totally separate from York County and James City County, even though it's all one big metropolitan area. Most people don't know where they are when they cross the line from one to the other. Couple of things we have and the counties have that are unusual. We do not have any roads. All the roads are maintained by the state, and however, cities do have their own roads. So in the city of Williamsburg, they take care of that. So when people ask, you know, why can't we do something about the medians or the roads or whatever? We have to ask VDOT because we don't have the authority to do it. And as we learned during this COVID information, you know, problem that we've had last year, we don't have a local health department. The health department in Virginia is run by the state. And in fact, in our area, in our division, we have six different localities in one health department district. So it makes things a little bit different. With that, I'll check back and see if Michael is back up online. Are you, Michael?
I'm not seeing him yet, Jim.
Okay.
Going in and out.
All right. We'll see if he gets, if he gets back on. Let me, let me talk about a couple of other things that maybe try to head off and answer some of the questions that we think will be coming. One, I had extensive discussions this afternoon with our general manager of the service authority. Everybody has been seeing the information that's been passed around by the homeowners association about the leak we have in a main water line that we're having to have an extensive operation to try to get repaired. And what we've asked for is we've asked for folks to do a voluntary curtailment of irrigation. And let me give you the reason why behind that. Essentially, the water line that comes out of the Fire Forks Plant along Route 5, John Tyler, and goes under Powitan Creek and somewhere down there, under Powitan Creek, about 30 feet down, there's a break or a leak in the pipe that has compromised the system and it has to be repaired. Unfortunately, it's one where you can't really get to it to repair it. So what they're going to do is we're going to bypass it and put a different line in until we can go back and figure out how to get redundancy in the system. Right now, from the time we found out about it, we had to go through a process where we did the joint permit that runs through the Virginia Marine Resource Group, and they take care of all the state permits, the environmental quality and everything. But we had to do studies for soil support and hydrology, make sure we were contributing to a flooding problem before they would allow us to put this pipe bridge across the creek, and that's what's going to be happening. Where we are right now is all those permits have been taken care of. The design has been completed and it has gone to VDOT for approval. And VDOT tells us that they do expect expedited approval probably in the next week. Once that's done, but they're hoping that by early to mid-June, we can get the process started. And they think once it starts, it takes about three weeks to construct. So what we're asking for is everybody's patience and trying to minimize the usage. And the reason for this is because when we have higher irrigation demand and we have a very compromised system out there, it can cause a loss of firefighting capability out in some parts of the county. So, you know, by the way I look at it is if I can curtail my use of water for irrigation, I might save somebody when they have a fire response at one point or another. We do tell you that the line is still serviceable. You still have water. We just are asking people for helping with the situation by not irrigating if they don't absolutely have to. Okay, I'm going to see if we can get Michael back up now. I see his picture, but I don't hear the video yet, audio. I can see you, but can't hear you.
I think you're muted, Michael.
Jim, if I could just, we do have some questions regarding the service authorities announcement. So I just have a little follow-up to what you just said. Because the information that you just provided is good news in comparison to the first information that went out from the service authority, which was anticipating a mid-July, as long as possibly mid-July. So it may be possible that once you get to the point where you have your VDOT approval, that the service authority could put out an update, that that part's been accomplished. Because the questions that we're getting here in the office is why does it take so long for the permit process?
Yeah. Well, and what I would tell you is that I ask these same questions of the service authority general manager. And unfortunately, well, unfortunately, the problem is that in this kind of a process that we have to go through wetlands and across creeks and everything, is it's one that has to require a sequential approach. There has to be the hydrology studies, there has to be, you know, the stuff that we had to do on a very shoestring, very quickly to get done and get in. Then they give their approval, then we have to come back and go through the simultaneously while they were doing it. We were trying to accelerate the design process. So we're at the point now where I believe it'll be in VDOT's lap, and we've been assured from VDOT that they will get high priority for us as quickly as we can get this thing permitted and set up and start construction. They think three weeks is what they're looking at. So we'll keep you posted with updates as we get the approvals back and let people know when the construction is starting and when they can expect it to be back to normal.
Great. Michael, you with us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
You got it.
I guess it's the Cox connection that is giving us trouble. I'm sure there'll be some questions on that later tonight as well. And there's a prime example right here on the webcam. I'm Michael Hippel and I'm chairman of the Board of Supervisors this year and enjoying it. This is my third go around as chairman of the board. I'm also running for reelection as Jim is. Both of us are running. Cover Ford County is one of our bigger neighborhoods that we are able to share together. And I consider my side really the heart of Ford County, but Jim considers his side the heart of Ford County. But it's a wonderful neighborhood and we're proud to have Ford County in our community. And there's so many talented people in here that it's unbelievable, the talent that is within one neighborhood within James City County. Also chair the, are also in HR TAC, and I'm chair of the Finance Committee. That has to do with the Hamptow Rose Bridge Tunnel, which is and something closer to home, as you can see, of course, is the work that's being done around Ford County right now and trying to maneuver the traffic and everything else from Old Town and trying to get the turnaround in there. And people are still getting used to that, and but that project's coming along great. The funding to fund the other two projects right away, but we don't. But as you'll see, we're putting power lines underground, making that normally wouldn't get done with these projects, but we put funds in James City County. And in fact, since I got on HR TAC, this board has put $3.7 million into transportation and has been able to gain $100 million in transportation for James City County alone. So that says a lot for what the board's, you know, ability and what we're trying to push with the little bit of funds we and all the projects we have. So, but also as mentioned, I'm in a couple of the Quanis clubs and HR TAC and Huron Fund, and that's the military group. And Jim probably, Jim's probably going to want to take that over next year with his military background and and but I ended up in chairman's position, so he said, you know, let's, let's switch baby next term. So we're working on that as the next term comes up in January when we do our organizational meeting. So there's a, you know, as a lot goes on in the county. Of course, our strategic plan is always in place for our comp plan and what we're doing there and do that every five Tuesday afternoon, really, very lengthy meeting on that, where we're going and what we're, what we're hearing from the citizens as far as growth and everything. And you'll have to excuse my ducks. I feed them at night and they're usually on the other side of property, but my voice carries, so they're hearing me and they're coming over here looking for a little meal, so you have to excuse that tonight. Jim?
Okay, thanks. Let me cover a couple of other things to add on to what Michael was saying about the comp plan. We did have quite an extensive, almost a five hour work session the other day. And the name of the comp plan is going to be our county, our shared future. And there's a real big emphasis on preserving the rural lands and the nature of, you know, the rural nature of our county. One of the things we've done is made some substantial reductions to the size of the primary service area. And we've gone through a lot of iterations. It's gone back to the planning commission now that we've had our work session. They will take it through their approval process. It should come to the board, I believe, in July for a public hearing. And then we're, I think we're set to adopt it in September. So if you've been following that, there's a good, good information on the website for the comp plan. If there are any other questions, we'd like to entertain those as we go. Let me see. One other thing I'd talk about is, let me throw out a little bit on budget information. One of the things I'll tell you is that last year we struggled with the budget when COVID hit. And we had proposed budget on the table and it took us quite a while to go back and look at different options. We ultimately came to consensus to cut the originally proposed budget for the current fiscal year that we're in right now. It ends in about a month. We cut it by 10% and then hoping that would get us through the year of COVID. And I think our staff gets great credit for how they have managed the expenses because they have, even though we had some reductions in income, we've managed to finish this year with a probably, it looks like it's going to be about a four to five million dollar surplus. It allowed us to do a couple of things. We reinstated the pay raise that we had deferred. We reinstated some CIP, some, you know, capital projects. And we've gotten to the point now where when we looked at the current budget we just approved for the next fiscal year, it's still below the original projections by about 17 million from what we projected several years ago. But it does reinstate a lot of things that I think that as we are beginning to recover. We did get some CARES money, the first round under the, I can't remember the name of the bill now, but anybody, it was 14 million that we got for the county. We basically have certain categories we can use that for it as we COVID related, but public safety was the one we could, we could use it for. We will eventually use all that 14 million by the deadline, but end of December. Our staff has been very careful in tracking and making sure that we don't let any of those dollars escape us. The second round that just came out is about 15 million, but it's a split. We got seven and a half million this month in May, and the remainder will come one year later in May of '22. The difference with this is we can replace lost revenue with some of this, but it does take, in fact, take over a longer time period. I think it's until 2024 we have to use it. But so the net result is we've gotten about $30 million worth of, to the county, just the county alone. There's additional money that's gone to the schools as well, and our staff has been really good about taking care of it. I think we're fiscally responsible and the bond agencies tend to agree with us because we just got our triple, triple renewed just about a month ago, I believe it was. So we have a, one of the smallest counties in the country that has a triple, three, all three agencies give us a AAA rating. Let me throw it back to Michael.
Yeah, and adding on to that, we just, we did a bond and with that bond, it saved us $1.7 million, which goes back to the citizens. And it's amazing what we've been able to save since we've really looked at our bonding capability. We've looked at our budget and we got so much praise on, you know, we thought we may have to go to 20%. We agreed to go to 10%, and that 10% really saved us in the long run as far as all the taxes and the revenue that we would have seen with tourism that wasn't coming in. Those cuts, and I got to hand it to county staff and on the board for all the hard work that they did. You go, you know, we're in a situation where we've got a plan and we really set the pace for other communities on what we you think you really need to, yeah, it's going to be a lot deeper and a lot harder on us than you think. And so the actions we took early, that was told to us that during the bonding and during our triple rating, that that saved us because a lot of the places went down a notch or two where we acted so quickly that we went up, we stayed where we were at, able to hold that, which we're very proud of. And, you know, of course, that 1.7 million now can go into CIP projects and pay-to-go projects. So we're not borrowing in order to pay for these projects. And I'll turn it back over to Drew for questions that we may have that I may have missed or
Thank you, gentlemen. So we do have some questions that have been sent to us in advance. My plan is to take my webcam down now and so I could be looking at the questions without sticking my nose right in the webcam and getting everybody all upset. So I'm going to do that now and feed the questions to you. Jim and Michael, you had already mentioned that the roads in the county are maintained by VDOT. One of the questions that we have really talks about the road right of way and the vista off the road right of way in terms of junked vehicles, wrecked cars, tall grass, major tree debris and things like that. And the question is, is there, is there a methodology, is there even a plan in place to help address what's considered an eyesore along these road vistas? And specifically News Road, Long Hill Road and Centerville Road around Ford's Colony.
And it, it depends on the zoning in those areas. If it's zoned A1, they can have more vehicles. The other zonings prevent less. There's, there's not, but so much we can do. We just had the General Assembly pass some legislation of how we could further look into neighborhoods and that sort of thing as far as considering what is an abandoned vehicle and what that would cover and if it was covered with a tarp or a fence or plantings. And so we've been looking at that because we've gotten complaints in other neighborhoods of that. But if you're in an A1 zoning and the General Assembly also said that they, the A1 zoning can be a large piece and they didn't want to restrict the farmers and everything else with, with vehicles that they may be holding. You may have a one acre piece that's zoned A1 and a hundred acre piece is zoned A1 and may have more vehicles on the one acre. So we're looking into any way we can to, to try to address some of those and try to put that eyesight out of the, you know, viewing public. And a lot of them come back to us and they're, I'm getting ready to restore that vehicle. I'm saving this one for parts. And, and so it's, it's very tough to, you know, blanket the whole thing. And I know some people have talked about, well, when they go out and cut, clear cut land and that sort of thing and timbering, you can clear cut the whole thing and it, it does look like a mess until it grows back up. But that's a right of that type of zoning that they can go in and do that as well. Jim?
Yeah, we've had, I will say that we've had very good success with the legislation that we got from the General Assembly. It gave us a greater capability of dealing with junk or abandoned cars and things like that on properties, as Michael mentions, other than the rural A1. I've had several cases in neighborhoods in my district, over near, even over near Newtown, where I've had citizens call and complain about multiple three, four, or five junk cars, cars up on blocks and, you know, with the tarps over them and all that. And that, once we got this legislation, we've had the ability to clean that up in a very expeditious manner. So I think it's, it's helped a lot in some areas of the county. But as Michael says, when you get out into the more rural areas, we still have less capability of enforcing some of those things. I think anything to do with anything abandoned along the right of way or in the right of way or grass growing up or whatever, we do have a very good working relationship with VDOT. And I quite often call them and tell them, you know, this is an area where we need some attention. If we're either for mowing or, you know, quite often we'll, we'll have a trash that falls off the back of a pickup truck and they'll be glad to pick that up. They also will get, we have a deer, dead deer or whatever gets hit along the this. So there, every time I see something like that or anybody reports that, VDOT has been very, very responsive. But that, I hope that answers most of the questions, so.
Yeah, well, thank you. Next question is, as you're well aware, Eastern State Hospital, the state declared much of that property as surplus property. And so the question is, does the county have an interest or even a possibility of obtaining that property as county property, perhaps for an extension of the rec center or other recreational uses?
Want to, Jim?
Yeah, I'll start. Yeah, the, the one thing we did years ago that I think has makes it, makes it a little more easy for us to determine what happens on that property ultimately, is that it was zoned for government use because of Eastern State. What that means is that going forward with the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan says that area will probably be ultimately, when it gets developed or sold, into mixed use. So what we, what we have the ability to do is to control that process because it has to come to the Board of Supervisors for approval. And we can try to help shape and determine what happens with those pieces of property over there. I know that they're being marketed. I know we have talked to them periodically about a portion of it. There was one place we were looking at for a potential school site. To date, we haven't made a, any agreement or commitment. And once the, this thing is on the market, I'm not sure exactly how it would work out, but we always have the option to try to see if we can find a part, a part of it. But it hasn't just gotten to the point in marketing, I think, where it's really going to be developed anytime really soon.
Next question, I think Jim covered that. I'll, if I can add on that one.
Sure. Well, I'll give you a quick slip on this one, Michael. The, you and Jim in particular talked quite a bit about some of the funding that's coming down from the federal and state level COVID related, budget related, and talked about, you've already have plans in place to develop those projects. This question is, is parallel to that, but on the school system side. Jimmy made reference to the money coming to the school system. But Michael, are you aware of any particular plans that the schools have for infrastructure improvements related to that funding?
It, it all depends on the, the funding that comes in and how they can use it and the timeline that they can use it. Some of it's going to be so tight that they're not going to be able to do a whole lot with it as far as CIP projects. Maybe short-term CIP projects. If it's already in their budget, they can't use it. So if they like the buses, they're looking at the possible buses and, but they've got two in their budget right now for buses. So, and they're looking for eight buses, they could do six, but they couldn't do eight because they've already planned for it and they already had money appropriated for that purchase. So the COVID relief fund money, you can, you can apply it to new things that will enhance the ability of children to go to school, cleanliness and that sort of thing. But if it's in your budget prior to that date, you can't go, well, I'm going to put it, use it for this and save my money that I appropriated and maybe do it for something else. So you have to look at others and there's, there's quite a bit of stipulations with this money that comes in. We've been very good on our side and, and the school's working very hard. They've gotten a lot of money and done a lot with it as far as cleanliness, keeping the schools up, keeping things moving, keeping things going, hiring extra people and that sort of thing in order to, you know, you utilize any funds. We're trying to utilize every dollar that comes into James City County with COVID relief funds connected to it. So we're looking at every possibility and if it, if it hadn't been for the money that came in or from COVID, we wouldn't have been in the shape we are now. So it was a, it was a blessing to us to have that extra relief and that gave us some extra funds to do other projects and move things forward. So it's, it's, it's been a lot of help for James City County because we're, we were hit so hard with tax, the, or tourism. And we're able to keep our, you know, tax base to where it is. We're not raising any tax or anything else. We're keeping it. And we're able to keep our, you know, tax base to where it is. We're not raising any tax or anything else. We're keeping it, you know, tight. We're moving forward. We're able to spend on CIP projects that are related. One, one good thing the county did, we took and we joined with the school. We said, how many schoolchildren do we have that do not have the internet? Cause when this started, children were having to go out to school buses parked in locations and their parents are sitting in the car with them and they're doing the homework. They're getting knocked off the internet. They're having to go back, find it and, and my son was a prime example, you know, a year ago, I couldn't have done this right here where I'm sitting, but now I can. And, and it was because my three children, there was no cable out here. It stopped 3,000 or 1,300 feet from the house. And so with this COVID funding, we, we did every child. We missed a few because they were so far away and it would cost millions. But we did every child we could possibly do with the COVID funding before December 31st, had the contracts in place with Cox, had everything run, had the children back at home, back in a safe environment. They're not sitting on the side of the road or sitting in a parking lot or trying to sit by the library and get a hotspot. And, you know, so it's made a big difference in a lot of the children's lives because the children were falling behind. They were, you know, some of them were doing well that, you know, I've got three that are still in school. And I've got two that do very well learning with electronics and, and over the internet and everything else. I've got one that he learns by one-on-one. And that's why our teachers come in such a, a great demand because that one-on-one connects with that child and really keeps them from falling behind. So our, our teachers have done an outstanding job on what they've had to deal with as far as this whole pandemic. And I hope that takes care and answers that question.
Yes, thank you.
I'll, I'll throw in just one thing real quick. The, the CARES money, which is the first batch of money, they got the same kind of money that we did. So they were, had the same restrictions we, we had on it. And as Michael said, I think my daughter teaches school here in James City County and they, they made sure that they had good technology. They spent a lot of it on computers and technology, cameras that would work for, with the kids and and as Michael mentioned, running the, the internet out for them. But that was fairly limited in what they could do. I, I believe this next batch that we get, the Recovery Plan, they, they probably have the ability to tackle some more capital programs. But as Michael says, it can't be something that was already planned in the budget. But there's enough on our list that we didn't get to that I think they could, they could probably take care of that in short order.
Well, thank you. The next question goes back to the discussion of bonding that you introduced a little bit a few moments ago. And you have a number, apparently a number of upcoming bond issuances. And the question is, you know, the example is the general services building, but the general question is, what, what is part of your decisions or parameters regarding whether there's, whether the bond discussion is, is subject to a citizen's referendum vote? Or whether it's handled at the Board of Supervisors level?
This is one I'll, I'll jump in. This is one I wish I there are, there are, there are certain bond issues and I'll go back to one, the one I remember that we had to go to referendum for was when we did the Parks and Recreation or the Open Greens, Green Space Fund years and years ago. And that passed overwhelmingly by, by the citizens. But it's, it's the type of bonding that we're doing. There's one type that like that, that would, that requires a referendum. But for the most part, when we go out to build a new school or a new building or whatever, we get the kind of financing that we do normally does not have to go to referendum. And it's just, it's a legal distinction that I, I would have to have the county attorney to, to make the fine points for us. But when I ask him, he says, nope, this one needs it and that one doesn't.
And it all depends too with our bonding and, and what our capability is to bond. And right now we're coming, when I got on the board, we were at $227 million in debt. We are right now in the area of about 106 million. And 106 million is not much for our size of our community. But to drop it down from that, and that was prior boards, there was a lot they had to do in a short period of time with schools, fire stations, police stations and that sort of thing. So that, that rose that number up. And, and then what we did is we decided, well, let's, let's try to get a triple bond rating. And we know we're going to have to bring that debt down. So we came up with a game plan of how to bring that debt down and how to manage our debt and curve some certain things. And the board came together very well and did that. And that gave us the triple bond rating, which now gives us the ability to borrow money a lot less expensive than we were borrowing it before. And like Jim said earlier, we're the smallest community in the United States that has that rating right now. So our citizens should be proud. Usually that rating is for 100,000 plus citizens, not say 77,000, what we have now roughly in James City County. And so that gives us a better bonding ability and it gives us an ability to pay go. So as we do these, we're driving our numbers down. And over the next couple of years, that 106 is going to be driven down even further. So then that gives us the ability to sit there and go, okay, what projects do we have coming up? And as you know, we put the elementary school on hold for right now because we found that the numbers weren't there for what we needed. We think we need more for bright beginnings. And, and that's what I think we're looking more and we're working hand in hand with the school board to look at more of those type projects rather than a large middle school right now. And that gives the ability to look at other projects that we have coming up, other needs that we have coming up. The voter registration, that needs to expand. They're in a very tight quarter. We've got them cramped in there. We're looking at that. And we're looking at several items. Do we build? Do we buy? What do we do? We're in that process right now. And once the board gets through that process and, and figures out what is the best bang for our buck, then we'll decide what we're going to do with the voter register. And that will give them the ability to have the space they need. And of course, as everybody saw last year, voting has totally changed from what it used to be and it's going to continue to change. And it's going to continue to demand more space and more room and, and, and more time. So it's a lot of things we're looking at as far as our finances go and how to best manage those as we go through the next several years.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that one of the things we did at this work session the other day was to look at the 20-year space needs study that we had commissioned and done. And basically it takes each of our divisions of the county government and projects what is needed to serve the population that we expect over the next 20 years. And in some places it's very modest, maybe a small, small change here and there. Some places we are already behind. General Services is a good example. They really do need to have a better facility than they have right now. They're sort of cobbled together in multiple different locations. Voter registration was another one. And ultimately what will come back to us after this board meeting that we just had, is they'll come back and tell us, okay, here is what it's going to cost to do this expansion that we think we need over the next 20 years. And then here are the priorities and we can build a, a step and build it into our, our capital plan as we go forward. Not everything that was in the study would necessarily get done, but the important thing was it highlighted for us what's most critical and what needs to be done first.
And I think it's important for the citizens to understand as well, this study has been about a year, year and a half or so in the makings. And it's still going on. There's still more to do. But the board was proactive and said, hey, we need to start looking at what are our needs? And, cause you know, usually somebody comes to us and says, I need a bigger room. I need more room for 10 people. I need to add on to this. And it becomes an emergency. What this board is doing is they've decided we're going to take a proactive step. And we're going to step back and we're going to do a few studies and we're going to find out what our needs are, not only for today, but the next 20 years. Then we're going to put a game plan together. How do we get there in the next 20 years? What are we going to spend? And what do we need? And what's our priorities? And how we're going to move through this and pay for it? So, you know, it's, it's a, I'm proud of the board for, you know, what they're, what they're doing and how they're moving on this. And I think it's a great thing for the citizens to know that the board is not just willy nilly, okay, let's build this, let's build that. They're taking a 20-year program and trying to put that in place as to, if we're all off the board next year or two years or four years or whatever, the next board will have this template in place and have these metrics in place in order to move forward and continue going.
Thank you. Continuing along similar planning theme, there's a question about the 2015 strategic plan. What kind of timeline is the county on, Michael, in terms of updating the strategic plan?
Well, right now the strategic plan, we're slowly implementing it in every decision we make. And if you watch the meetings, you'll see that this is, this is number three, this is number seven, this is number one. And putting things in place so that everything we do is connected to that. So we're not, you know, going off on a whim somewhere. We think it's a great idea. How does this fit? How does this fit in our plan? What are we going to do? How do we work this in? Is this a necessity? So we're still in our, I would say infancy, whether we're, we're, we're figuring this out as far as, you know, we know what our strategic plan is. We know the direction we're going. And right now we're trying to implement it all the way across the county so that every division uses that as metrics to measure what's important and what's not and what, what's, what is the direction we're going?
Yeah, I, I would add, I think that the, it starts with the comprehensive plan, which is really citizen driven and it should be. Because that plan is, is the citizens' effort to tell us exactly what their community, they want their community to look like 20 years from now. From that, if you would call it an aspirational or a vision document, we come up with goals, strategies and actions. And then we use the, it transitions over to the strategic plan. And we take those goals and use the strategic plan to figure out how we're going to build our budget, how we're going to fund it. And so, you know, it's, it's a constantly evolving thing. I mean, the, the basic plan is there. I guess if we need to go back and tweak it, we can, but to be quite honest with you, I think it's, it's pretty comprehensive, pretty, pretty efficient document. It's something we didn't have when I first got on the board. And days gone by, we had a strategy, a comprehensive plan we put on, on the shelf and then sort of sat and around budget time, tried to figure out what we wanted to do. And it, it became a little more of a free for all. So this, this makes it a lot more structured and a lot more, a lot more rational, I believe.
Just one, another comment about schools, they understand there's a task force. It's been established for the Williamsburg, James City County School System. And question is, who's on that task force? Cause you know, what, what is their mission? Is, is it meetings open to the public? You know, that type of thing.
Excuse me, Jim.
I've, I've been on the, we have a school liaison committee, which was sort of the, oh. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I lost my video here, but we'll, I guess I'll see if it comes back up there.
Your video is hot.
Okay, good. Yeah. Now, the school liaison committee was, that I've served on, we had basically two members from the city council, two members from the Board of Supervisors and two members from the school board and plus the administrative sides of all three jurisdictions. And we met on a regular basis to try to, you know, iron out and work through problems and, and deal with the issues. One of the things that has been ongoing for us has been the, the problem that we have with elementary school being really crowded. It's really, really crowded, but our, but our projections, if you take a look at just the elementary school students, it's relatively flat over the next 10 years. What's causing the real crowding problem is that we have about 395 students that are in what we call pre-K programs that are being serviced by, by the school district. But we probably have another 160 or so who are on a waiting list that, that we don't have the ability to serve. And the way we serve these is we've been incorporating them into elementary schools, a class or two here, a class or two there. And the basic argument that we've been back and forth about is, do we build another elementary school which has about $30 million price tag? And then cost two to $3 million a year ongoing to operate to accommodate the overflow? Or do we take a look at potentially how we want to serve maybe a little differently, these preschool kids? And our board had come up with the idea that on, co-located on some of the elementary school campuses, we could have preschool classrooms or buildings that wouldn't require a whole lot of other infrastructure. We could build them a lot more cheaply. And then we could then put the, the pre-K kids in that and open up the elementary schools so that they weren't nearly as crowded. So there's a little, there's a little bit of a philosophical difference necessarily between the Board of Supervisors, maybe in the school board. What we did was they decided they were going to study this process and they have created a task force. And I think you will, I, I do not know the details of exactly, but I'm, like any public body like that, it will be, it will be open to the public. The public will be able to know exactly what's going on. I think we are at a point right now where they are doing their consultant work. And when they get that report back from the consultant and then sit down and start determining how we want to proceed in there, there will probably be announcements of more meetings and people can tune in or, or maybe even get back to going to these meetings in person and, and watching the processes that unfolds. But, but my hope is that we can come up with a, a plan on how we're going to take care of these preschool kids and our elementary school kids and give them quality education they need and the buildings, the resources they need, but doing it at the most reasonable cost to the taxpayer.
Thank you. As you're well aware, Long Hill Road is near and dear to our hearts. And we understand that Phase One is due to be completed at, at the end of this year or perhaps this fall. So the question is a couple fold. Number one, are, are we on track for completion this fall? And how's that, how's that going in general? And then a specific question about the 35 mile an hour speed limit around the roundabout, which, which we're getting a lot of feedback seems to be entirely too fast.
All right. The, the roundabout, we can always address with VDOT and VDOT puts that into place. We don't have anything to do with that on speed or anything else. And, and they'll do a study on that. But we can, we can make a comment to Rossi Carroll and have him look into that if, if they're concerned here, because that's, that's moved along pretty good. It's on task. Thank goodness. We've had, you know, we, we had such a wet winter, fell behind a little bit, but they're picking up speed now that we've got some dry weather. Hopefully we'll get some rain shortly because that's needed as well. But it's moving along pretty good. Everything looks like it's coming together like it should. Looks like by the end of the year, we should be completed. And, but you know, as I know very well in construction, things can happen. And and right now, as everyone knows with COVID and the shutdown, I just was informed the other day that the concrete we're pouring tomorrow morning, we're getting. But the guy who's pouring the concrete for me, next week, he's got six projects that they've canceled the concrete because they're starting to run out of the raw materials to make the concrete. So it's another thing that, you know, we've got a, a perfect time to, and we've had a perfect time to get projects done, get them done, completed on time, save money in the long run and put it to the bottom end and save it. And now prices are going up, things are escalating. So that's a, that's a fear of not only us, but everybody that how much of these projects, you know, are going to end up escalating and costing us more. And, you know, Skids Creek is a prime example, just started. So we're just breaking ground on that. And that'll be a nice, a nice project for down there and, and getting things in the Grover area, out of the congestion area. But, you know, the roundabout, we can definitely see if we can slow those speeds down on that. And that's just a matter of a call for Rossi. And, but Long Hill Road, everything looks like everything's coming together like it should. And they are on time, on time to complete.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that having lived in Europe and dealt with roundabouts many, many times, it, it's, it's purpose is to moderate the, the flow of traffic and without having, you know, stop and go, stop and go. And I think I've been surprised, every time I've driven through there, even though it's not totally completed yet, people are, are doing well with it. And you're right, 35. And you, you're right, 35 is probably a little fast to go around that thing. I think that will, the, the natural design will probably limit how fast people move, move through it. But it remains to be seen when they finally get it finished and, and normal traffic resumes as to how well it works.
Is Long Hill Road Phase Two in your, in your love view?
I believe it's Phase Two. From, from my understanding of it, I don't think it's, anything is funded on it yet. That Phase Two would take us from just beyond Old Town up to, I think, almost to the entrance to Warville. And then Phase Three is from there on out to Freedom Park. And, and Phase Three is, is really relatively less. Phase One was the, the biggest chunk of the whole process. When we, when we did the study and broke it into those three phases, I think Phase Two would be the next one. But to my knowledge, I don't think we have a, a funding lined up for that one yet there. It's far enough down the priority list compared to some of the other things that are going on in the county. But Michael says, we're using some of our money to leverage and get more state money than I've ever seen it come in here. So there's a possibility that it could get, it could get accelerated, but it, it will be more down the priority list.
And we're looking into smart scale and any other funding possibilities that we can apply for, for congestion relief. And a lot of times when one project's finished, the congestion relief from there goes into congestion just down the road. And then that gives us a better number in order to apply for some of these projects. I know one of the hangups down there is, I guess it's, it's really not a hangup, but it's a decision that hadn't been made, is there for Second Street and for Lafayette High School. So those, that area right there, how that comes out, whether it's one entrance, two entrances or what in there, is still not totally decided and how that flows. And if there's something back further to utilize the land to get people off the road to come in there and back on the road. So they haven't decided totally on, you know, how they're going to fund or how they're going to make all that work and come together in that one intersection.
Thank you. Michael, you talked about Cox earlier. It's the question I think we get every year is, is, is there any possibility for competition for Cox to help in, in, in create the competition, improve the service?
We can't get anyone to come in and compete against Cox. We have opened it up forever. And there's a, there, there's a lot of things we cannot do. We just sent a letter to Cox and Jim and I were talking about it earlier today. And we sent a letter to Cox on what we want them to do and things we want. Of course, we're going to get a letter back that says, no, we're not going to do that. And, but that way, at least Cox will be the one telling us, we're not going to do these things. And what I'm trying to do, and I, I talked to some of the senators and congressmen and all, and, and I know that Kane, Warner, Rob, and all them are all interested in, in getting 5G across the state of Virginia. I want to get 5G and be the first county to have 5G in it. So I discussed it with the board not long ago, and I've had the county administrator poking around, looking at it. And, and we're looking at some big firms in order to bring 5G through the area. Because they'll bring it in and then everyone can attach to it. So Cox could come on there, AT&amp;T, Verizon, any of them can come on there. It's going to put more antennas in our area than we're used to seeing. And, but it's, it's, it's a way to get that through the county. If we can get that through the county, then we can cover the county in that 5G network. Then that's going to really improve not only what the citizens fight with daily, which is just like what I had earlier on this interview here or on this conversation is, is mine going out and, and I'm dead in the water. And so it'll help our businesses. And what we're looking on the, on the board is not only do we help our citizens, but if we can help our businesses to get to that faster internet, to end up moving into our community, that is a tax base that helps our citizens and keeps our tax rate down for our citizens where the businesses will cover that and we can keep a low tax rate for our citizens. So I'm pushing very hard and, and Jim and all the board are behind this. And, you know, that, that we're trying to get 5G across the county. And so it's going to be a lot of work. It's an uphill battle. But we've taken uphill battles before. And like, like Jim said, we're, we're a AAA-rated community, the smallest in the United States. Well, why can't we be a 5G county in the United States?
Yeah, let me throw in, one, people, people talk about the franchise. And our county attorney may maybe put it better than anybody else. He says, the, the concept of the franchise has outlived its usefulness. Because what happens is we have a franchise agreement with, with Cox. But, and it's not exclusive. Anybody else that wants a franchise, we'll give anybody a franchise to come in and work in the county. The reason we haven't been able to get them to come in is because the infrastructure for Cox's facilities here is very, very expensive. And they're not required to share with anybody. So a competitor comes in and they can't use Cox's lines. They have to put in their own. That's the reason we're not going to get files in a lot of areas because Verizon doesn't want to come in and put that heavy investment into infrastructure. I think what's happening though is, as Michael says, with 5G, this whole scenario is going to change a little bit. And we will have an opportunity if we can get it to have true competition and have true value for folks. Right now, it's a monopoly, whether you like it or not, it's a monopoly. You know, because Cox has agreed that they're not going to go mess in Verizon's areas and Verizon's not going to mess in Cox's areas. And we tend to, tend to be the victims of all that. I'll tell you, my frustration is that that franchise agreement is sort of levied on us by the state. And we have literally no say except for one or two small items that affect county broadcast channels and a few of the services for county buildings. The rest of it, we, we can't dictate or, or question any of it. And I found out to my chagrin this time that I said, well, what happens when it comes in? Because it has to come to the board for a vote. What happens if we vote no? And the county attorney says, state government says you can't vote no. Well, and my response was, okay, then why is it coming back to the board? It's really a, 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 the franchise issue, people look at it and say, well, you, you, James City County have signed a franchise. We, it's, it's a meaningless document as far as I'm concerned. So we've got a long way to go to get real good competition and, and better service for our citizens. And my frustration is maybe showing through a little bit on this, but I've, I've had just about enough. Like everybody else in the community.
All right, the next question is no less controversial. But not too long ago, the, the county modified its policy on recycling. Whereas as part of it being a part of the general tax base, it's now, you know, individual payments. The question is, in your view, how's that, how's that going along? Do you anticipate any changes in the relative near term?
We should have some changes coming and it'll be within, I talked to the county administrator and in five years, our contract, one contract will be up. And I said, we really need to look hard as far as, and we're looking at other communities and what they're doing. Do we, is, and recycling is very important to James City County residents. They really enjoy recycling. We just strike, struck a thing up with OI. And any glass, we're going to get ready to have containers set at certain locations. And any glass anyone has, they can bring it to that location and drop it in the containers and recycle that way. We're also looking at, do we recycle across countywide? And that we're so diverse community. We've got certain areas that are very well populated. It works great. We've got other areas up in my zone that are so spread out that it doesn't work very well and it's very costly. So we're trying to figure out how much do we do? How much do we get the biggest bang for our citizens out of if we, if we do a increase? And say, okay, we're going to put this much towards trash removal, recycling, including limbs? And what is that going to look at, look like? We had the William &amp; Mary Group do a study on it and, and bring that back to us and, and tell us what was a, what were their thoughts on a good direction we should be going. So we, we had a five-year window. We're in probably year two now. And of looking at this and figuring this out before it gets to our next contract agreement and figure out what is our best options and what best serves the citizens. Because I've got citizens up my end going, well, you don't come up my neighborhood, you don't come up my woods. And, you know, I want the same thing that you get here. And, and it's hard to get that same, same bang for their buck when it, when we're spread out like we are. So we're trying to figure out how much can we do and utilize maybe cost one thing in one area and something in another? Or all costs the same? But we're looking at hard because we realized when the recycling thing, you know, went to the wayside to say for a time period. And we changed the suppliers and that's why China stopped taking this. So we, you know, there were, it was going right into the trash and not into recycling. And we're looking at all those options. And the citizens were alarmed. They did not like the fact that they could not recycle. And I don't blame them. It's a big part of life. And I think it, it helps us with, you know, keeping everything clean on our roads and all that. And also putting something back into, to reuse to another life. Jim?
Yeah, I, I will say that when this all occurred a couple of years ago and we, we made the decision, we were spending, before this last, most recent change, we were spending about $800,000 a year out of the general fund to provide recycling. But as Michael mentioned, that was not all the county. It was only in the, in certain areas of the county because of the efficiencies of being able to pick up in, in more densely populated areas. So our rural folks really didn't get to participate, even though we were spending some of their general fund tax money on the program. When the change came along, because China wasn't going to accept a lot of what we were doing before. And that was a frustration for a lot of folks because what, we were contributing to the problem because we were putting stuff in that shouldn't be in there. And they were getting contaminant, what they call contaminated flow and China didn't, didn't want that. And so we got sort of pushed off. And as you know, now we have a much narrower list of things that we can put in and recycle in. We lost quite a few folks when we went to this new program. We had the option of maybe continuing to pay for it out of the general fund, but the bill would have gone up from about $800,000 to a little over two, two to two and a half million dollars just for recycling. And Michael made a very good point to me. And that is that his people pay real estate taxes in the rural areas, just like folks here at Works County pay real estate taxes. But they're not, they wouldn't be getting the services of that recycling. So the decision was made to have it, a fee for, fee for service. So that where people were getting it, they were, they were paying for it and we weren't putting it on the back of the people who were not getting the service. I think long-term, what we need to look at is we're one of the very few communities that does not do, do normal county, mandatory county trash pickup. If you look in the city of Williamsburg or in York County, they provide trash pickup. Now, they, they contract, it's not done by city employees, they contract with these, these waste companies, but it's all done mandatorily. For example, I believe in York County and in the city of Williamsburg, you pay your trash fees to the county. They contract the work and the provider does not only trash pickup, but does the recycling pickup. And we are looking at that potential because we could have multiple different carriers and we could serve some of these more remote areas with smaller carriers out in the, the rural areas. So I think that's sort of what we would be looking at. If we're going to do that, we're going to have to come back to the citizens and say, hey, here's, here's what would happen. You would, you would basically be having to deal with the county for trash pickup as well as the recycling. But it could be done with, with the mandatory program at a much lower cost for everybody. There would be benefits and, and, and some drawbacks, but we would have to go to all the citizens and have them look at that. I think that's what, what you're going to see in the next two or three years when we start getting closer to the end of this contract we currently have.
Thank you. Another question about water. This is about water supply, but different from the current water break. This is more towards long-term planning for water supply, which I'm sure you're very much involved in. So if you could just help us understand a little bit about our relationship with, with potential water sources, new produce water supply or whatever you're, you're working on in, in regards to the long-term plan and how you tie that into your comprehensive plan.
Okay, we've got, you know, we, we're, we've got several options on the table. And, but all of them are a cost. As I've said, water is gold anymore. And Newper News was very smart to come up and take in, buy our reservoirs, which they created and years ago, which I'd love to have back, but that's going to be a tough thing. Swift has started to do very well as far as bringing the water level back up. The water, some of that's coming back up on its own for its ground withdrawal. DEQ said they're, they're not pushing as hard as they were three or four years ago. And talking about what they're going to cut back on us. So they're giving us a little bit more time to explore our options. Anything we go with is going to be a cost. If we go with Newper News, there's a cost in the infrastructure, changing things around. If we, if we find a water source within the county, connecting it and having reliability, it would be a tough thing to do. Because if we find something in the county that we could possibly use, we have to have reliability because we're having to man that area and man that station in order to pump water into our system and treat it. So it's, it's a very complicated system as far as what we're doing. Drawing out of the Chickahominy is very costly. And we've got everything in place and the land and everything else if we do do that. But that's a high cost to, you know, decell that, that water there and, and make it drinkable. It's, it's, we, York, York River is a better river to pull water out of and to take and, and get the desalination plant in place. And, and it's in the upper part of county, so it would give us more flexibility. But it, it would be less treatment cost compared to the Chick because there's more salinity. So we're, you know, we're going back and forth on what is our best. And we look for Doug, the director over there to give us advice. And, and he's, as he learns different things as far as from DEQ and he's on the Water Advisory Board and all. And he's, he's telling us what we're looking at, what's coming up. But, you know, that decision is not going to be in my thought process as far as a clear path. I would say if we can get a clear path within the next five years, we'll have done something. But it's going to take time and it's going to take effort. And we're going to have to see what's generating back in the aquifer and what other options may be out there. So it's a, it's, it's, I would love to give you an answer today that we have a golden ring and we're going to start pumping water in there. But this is a very tough. And, and right now, as, as you know, we're into the, I think Jim mentioned, I thought I heard a piece when I was trying to get back in on watering right now, because, you know, you're watering with your, you're drinking water and, and we're putting that on hold and asking everybody not to water the lawns unless they absolutely have to in order to keep our fire services up and where it needs to be while we repair these lines. And we've got infrastructure that's aging 40, 50 years in some of these places that we're slowly replacing. That's why the prices went up in order, because the study that we did about three, four years ago said you need to put money in your infrastructure and put money away because this is going to bite you in a few years if you don't start putting this away. So I was proud of the board. They went ahead and, and said, okay, let's, let's take this, let's put this advice in place. Let's do what we need to do. Let's make sure we have the funds available when we need them. And let's get it going now. And we're in a good, solid place. The only thing we knock in is definitely knowing where our next water source will be coming from. Jim?
Yeah, I would just tell, Michael mentioned Swift, that that's basically a program where we are treating in the, in our area. Here, the Hampton Road Sanitation District is treating wastewater to drinkable standards and re-injecting it back into the aquifer. And it was very controversial, but it seems to be relieving a lot of the pressure on subsiding aquifers. So they're recovering. That gives us hope that, and especially DEQ is very positive. That gives us hope that and especially DEQ is very positive about it. That gives us hope that. Our groundwater withdrawal permit won't be necessarily cut or or if it is not nearly to the degree. That they were originally projecting. They were talking about cutting it in half in about. Five years, five or six years from now. The the bottom line is there was always be enough water. The question is how much it's going to cost and drawing water out of the ground is the cheapest. So what we have right now is the cheapest and it's reflected by the fact that people may not realize it, but we have one of the lowest water costs of any jurisdictions in the in the in the area of this area of the state. Even though our prices have gone up because we've had to invest in in infrastructure. The the second thing is that we do have the ability to get the two million gallons today that we have already purchased from Newper News. We have been negotiating with them. They are an option for additional water because they have the surface water. And we could purchase some surface water from them. Michael and I go around and round about this because, you know, even more so than I, but I do share some of his concerns about do not want to be dependent on another. Jurisdiction for our water supply. And then thirdly, you know, as he mentions, whether it's the Chickahominy or the York River. The reverse desal of the river water there is probably the most expensive water we could buy. But if we really, really needed it, we have the ability to go do that. So. I I try to assure folks that that we have a plan to deal with the water supply. There will be water. The the concern we have is how do we provide you? A reliable, sustainable source of water at the minimum cost. And that's what we're trying to shoot for. But I hope that gives folks a little bit better idea of how we're trying to deal with this problem.
Yeah, well, thank you. Shifting topics. Over to retail space in the county. Always been an issue, struggling with vacant retail space. Certainly COVID has had a devastating effect on retail space in the counties. The question is. Are there are there tools in the in the toolbox for the board of supervisors? To help address vacant retail space and their marketing plans perhaps, or there are other? Tools that you might have to help with that particular issue or is it just supply and demand?
Let me start first. Okay. This was a concern about four years ago when I was running to get back on the board. And, you know, it was citizens, every time I talk to them, we're mentioning about how many empty storefronts we had, how many empty storefronts we had. Over the next couple of years, we made pretty good progress in filling a lot of those those storefronts and. Up until about, you know, twelve to eighteen months ago, we were not, we still had some empty ones. But we weren't as bad as we were before. And I'll go back to one of the questions I ask of our economic development folks and folks in commercial real estate and everything. We have a lot of these things that are developed by out of state interests. And they, you know. I said, wouldn't it be make sense to go ahead and rent something at a lower lower rate rather than sit it let it sit empty? Well, apparently the way things are investments ago and taxes are structured and everything that. Some of these out of state companies don't really care if it sits empty that much. I don't know whether it's being written off or what. But we have a we have very limited ability to to try to influence some of the out of state folks about. What they're asking in rents and and trying to get some of their their places filled. So I found that very frustrating. I think that COVID obviously has really done a number on the whole economy and all of us are going to be dealing with it for a while. We've got a lot of big stores that are going to be empty now. I think one of the things we have to do is we have to work with the business community. And I'm the board's representative on the Chamber of Commerce, the Business Council. And we have to work with our businesses to try to help do what we can, recognizing we. Have limited ability to influence and do what we can to try to make it more attractive to to fill some of these. The other thing we have is that we can look at is our redevelopment policies. You know, we got a lot of places that are being redeveloped. I don't know whether people know, but the grocery store that was up in the gorge area. Right by Croker Road that closed. It has been repurposed into a banking data facility. And they're putting some additional types of businesses. I think they're actually doing a daycare school or something in in one portion of it. So that's a that's a grocery store, if you would, is a difficult building to repurpose. That's actually being repurposed very effectively, I think. Michael, you take it from there?
Yeah, and as you come down the road, you know, you've got the candle. Light area there, the old candle factory, that's being repurposed. You go down to where the old Sears building was, where where the candy store used to be, that now is all being repurposed. Moving on down further to the Exxon. Was torn down and now was there, jump across the street to the old outlet mall. And the outlet mall there was raised and and now there's a new mall in there and. And grocery store and Harris Teeters all in there. CHKD has got a place in there. So. We are trying our best and it's very hard to, you know, I'll have a lot of people come up to me and say, well. Well, why don't you put them in that build? And I say, well, that would be just like if you were selling your house somewhere. And you moved into James City County and I told you, welcome, you have to go in that building. And you're like, well, I don't like that house. Well, that's the one we have available. I want you in out. I want you to build your house. You know, it's it's same thing with business. But everybody looks at business a little different. And we've always got to watch business and make sure where this is going. We don't get too much. But our EDA is definitely working hard to repurpose any of these buildings. That we have out there that are available. And they're constantly contacting people, keeping it on the list. Hey, this building's available, this building's available. Do you want to move into this? So. There's always going to be a a business that. Doesn't need a building any longer and trying to find a business to fit in there will always be a tough game. But we're with our EDA and what we're doing, I think we do a very good job of trying to fill these spaces as. As quickly as possible not to have the the blight. Out there that worries a lot of people, which I don't blame them. I don't like to. See these buildings deteriorate and and fall apart and. And so that's why some of these that we have gone in and and helped and encouraged to. To revitalize and tear down and rework and rebuild something new and. And it really helped not only the community, but James City County is all.
You still there, Michael?
I'm still here.
Okay.
Just faded a little bit.
I was going to throw in one more thing that I wanted to make a point since Michael had mentioned our EDA. We've had, I think people may remember the old John Deere. Factory that then became Lumber Liquidators until they left. And we had an announcement a little while back. I'm not sure too many people even noticed it, but. We have recruited a company called Navien, which is about one of the second, I think, one of the top two. Tankless hot water heater manufacturers in the in the world. They're out of South Korea. They had a West Coast operation and they selected James City County and that lumber liquidators old building to to start. Their in basic manufacturing facility for all of the US. So we're going to be the national headquarters for this company in the country. They are going to invest over the next few years seventy million dollars. In this factory up there and it's going to create a hundred and eighty jobs with an average salary of about fifty thousand, which is. Considerably better than the tourism industry. So this is when we talk about diversifying the economy. This is a one of the successes that we've had. We've got a couple others. We think that the brewery is going to be doing a major infrastructure upgrade as well. So we're getting companies that are willing to invest significant money into into the county. And the important thing for us is that that creation of jobs beyond the minimum wage level is really, really important to us.
Well, thank you. So we're moving back approaching eighty minutes now, so we'll begin beginning to wind this down. Just a couple remaining. Questions. What is regarding the tourism? Quote tourism tax that Senator Norman would help guide through the state legislature. And the question is. With the restaurants and the hotels. Struggling through COVID and now trying to reestablish their businesses. Has there been any discussion about a change in status of that particular tax? Your thoughts about its benefits or lack of benefits to the county and? And just what, is there any discussion of anything different on the horizon?
Jim? I knew you were going to do that. The, if you go back to the when this all occurred. It 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 I found it very discouraging and disheartening when it occurred because. It occurred without really significant input from local government and and the localities. This was. This was something that was agreed to with a few people and it was passed by the. The legislature and it is what it is. It takes a penny more on the tax in our local area here. Effectually known as Tommy Tax. But what happens is it does generate, I think, what, Michael, one point? Six million or so a year into the county. With half of that one percent comes straight to the county. That's that's for us. What people don't realize is the other half goes into the Tourism Council. And that it totals a good chunk of money each year for the Tourism Council and. You know, it's a it's a test now to see if it actually produces results for us. It was a horrible timing because COVID just decimated our industry. But as they get up and running, I think it's an opportunity for the Tourism Council to. Maybe prove that it's worth the expense that remains to be seen. One of the unfortunate parts of this in my mind is that. Prior to this legislation, the localities were putting significant money into the tourism function. James City County, I think, was seven hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. The three jurisdictions was about two million dollars a year. Part of the legislation that what came with this bill. Required us to continue giving that money. So we are the three localities are still giving a total aggregate of two million dollars. A year. That goes into the Chamber of Tourism Alliance in addition to. The half percent of the Tommy Tax they get and the half percent that we get back. So. I guess you could say we got half a percent and then they. They take back some of that by what they call maintenance of the effort money. The frustrating part is it's created some difficulties. The Tourism Council has been ruled to be a public body. Which was not the original intent of the sponsor. So now that they have to operate by all the rules that all local governments do. And be quite honest with you, the Business Council, the about forty percent of their funding on an annual basis. That comes from local government, which is very unusual when you deal with the Chamber of Commerce. So. Given what we said earlier about being a dull and rule state, we don't have a whole lot to say about. Our legislators do and. I I don't foresee personally any significant change in the short term. But that remains to be seen.
It's been, you know, we haven't had anything to be able to measure it with yet to see it's success. Because it just as it was getting off the ground, COVID hit. And so and and I know Senator Norman said that if it if it didn't work out, he would take it back off. And but we've got to figure out, is it working or is it not? And how it's controlled and and hopefully it'll bring more tourism into our area. And we'll be able to utilize that and and get more people into our area, more people viewing what we have going on. So but it's gonna it's gonna be, it's gonna take several years. To see this play through, to see where it's gonna, you know, if it's a benefit or not. So. I'm still waiting to see. Hopefully we're getting, we'll end up with a great benefit from this. And unlike other programs and it'll benefit the citizens and. And in the long run, more people will spend money in James City County. I know we'll have that one percent, but that one percent could be multiplied ten times maybe in tourism. So hopefully that'll happen and we'll end up with a greater gain in long run.
Well, thank you. This next question is probably best. Referred directly to the Chief of Police and by the way, we want to give a shout out to. Eric Peterson is promotion to chief. We think we're very excited for him and for that. But if you could just briefly describe the relationship between. The James City County Board of Supervisors, the James City County Police Department. And then expand that police department relationship with a. A community such as Fort Colony. Some we have Fort Colony Security here, as you know. We have private roads which we maintain, as you know, and the relationship. From your point of view of the James City County Police Department with with Fort Colony.
Want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I I want to, I want to first of all, say I have. I don't know whether people know or not, but I think we have a hundred and four sworn officers. It's our total police police force. Worked out on shifts around the clock, seven days a week. There are not a whole lot of police officers per capita in in James City County, and yet we are one of the safest. And best police communities in the in the Commonwealth. I know I had a personal conversation with the previous chief who is now Assistant County Administrator. And I went back to him when a lot of this started the last year and the last year and asked him about. Said, you know, I can't recall. A police involved shooting. Or, you know, anything like that in our history. And the police chief told me, he says, there have been exactly three. He'd been here as just as long as I had. He said, two of them I vaguely remember was where in the in the process of apprehending someone. Like robbing a bank or whatever. They exchanged gunfire and a suspect was wounded and but not killed and taken into custody. There was only one case in reported memory that he had. Where we had a fatality, the police shot someone, shot and killed someone. And that was one I remember fairly vividly. It was down on the south end of the county. It was a young man who was in a. A living mentally disturbed, I believe, living in that what was ostensibly a retirement community building. And he was creating a problem and they called the police on him. And when he came out of the building. He exchanged, shot at a police officer. And then got in the car and tried to run over him and actually did run over the police officer. The police officer shot and killed him. The police officer never went back on active service because of his injuries. I mean, he was really badly injured in the in the encounter. But that's the only time in in the entire history that I have. We have probably the most effective police department at dealing with our citizens in the in the manner in which we would like it to occur. And I'll tell you, they have a they have a little. Program in the police department called Not on My Watch. And if you want to see it, go look on the police department's video. I think the video is up on. The James City County website under the police department. And essentially what they're saying is that the policy amongst the officers here is that when they see something wrong. They're not going to let it persist. They will not allow it to occur on their watch. So I am really. Very positively impressed with our our police department. And I think. The fact that we have promoted from within has been really helpful. I'm looking forward to a really good relationship with you, Chief Peterson. And I think as far as how we get along, you know, they can come in here and patrol the roads because we have the agreement that. They are considered public for law enforcement purposes, but aside from that, you know, they they're here to help. However, our security and our homeowners association would like to help. Michael?
I tell you, Chief Brad Reinheimer, he did such a wonderful job while he was police chief. And now Assistant County Administrator. And and then we had three good candidates apply within James City County. All three gentlemen, very well qualified. Did an outstanding job course. And I called each one of them and congratulated them on running for the position. And of course, only one person would be selected. But I congratulate each one of them on what a wonderful job they have done through the years in James City County. And each one of them said, Michael, we're here to serve. Whatever position, we're here to serve. And that echoes throughout our whole community and throughout our whole police department. And it's very unique to have that and. Eric Peterson, Chief Peterson, I think is going to do a wonderful job. I think he's going to come in with a different look on a lot of things and say. You know, and as always, you get a new leader in, they've got new ideas and new thoughts and and new ways, but. He's already at our last meeting, he's putting his telephone number out there. Anybody needs it, call me. And he's not saying, well, call my assistant and let them call somebody. And he's not saying, well, call my assistant and let them call somebody and get to me. And so he's available by phone, which is very unique and rare in a lot of positions because it's hard to get to the top person in those positions. And he's putting out his telephone. And if there's anything anybody in Ford's Colony needs or wants, call them up. Call the police chief up and say, hey, chief, I was thinking on such and such. I was wondering what you're doing here, what's your game plan? And he may have to put you with another officer that handles that part of the division to give you more detail and that sort of thing. But, you know, it's it's he really, and just like the other two candidates, they are so integrated in our community and willing to work with every citizen. And that's what's really neat. We were very lucky to have such of candidates, three top candidates that were all qualified to do the job. And I told the county administrator, I said, well, I said, you've got a tough decision there because I said, you've got three good candidates that are all qualified. So he put a team together. Brad and others in the community came together. They interviewed, we had a police chief from outside the area. So he interviewed the three candidates, talked to them and all that. And their their pick was Eric to lead the the police department from this point on. So, you know, it was a very thought out. And I said, you know, the thing I liked about it was it was a from within. And it was, you know, it it gives our other officers a chance, men and women, to look at it and go, one day I may be police chief of James City County. So it really helps the morale as well. So I'm glad we have such a tight-knit and good qualified department in James City County.
Well, thank you. I'd like to welcome President George Woltov back in and so he can make some closing remarks. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
First of all, Supervisors Hippel and Eisenhower, thank you so much for your time this evening. Your insights and your candid remarks, I'm sure, have helped many of our members understand what's going on in the county. And it sure is a good picture to see the county coming back and even Ford's Colony coming back from COVID because it's certainly been a tough sixteen months, I will tell you. So thank you, everyone who joined the webinar. Thank you for the time this evening. I've learned some things. I hope everybody on the webinar has learned some things. As a one little commercial announcement, the Ford's Colony Pool is open tomorrow at noon time. We have a we're ready for you. So if the weather's good, please come and take a dip. With that, thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thank you. Thank you.